Jordan?
Here.
Mr. Lamb?
Here.
Ms. Lau?
Here.
Mr. Michael?
Here.
Mr. Shorsy?
Here.
Ms. Shear?
Here.
And Mr. Spicer?
Here.
May I just give a pledge, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Dave. You can have a motion to go to executive session for the purposes of employment of particular individuals, employment history of particular individuals or corporations, and to seek their advice.
Two more seconds.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Naturally adopted. Okay, so we return to public session. We don't have any action coming out of executive session. So we have an opportunity for public participation. Is there any member of the public who would like to address the board? Okay, appearing that there is none, no one. Approval of minutes for the February 5th meeting. I have a motion to approve those minutes. Are there any corrections or comments? None, all in favor of approving the minutes of February 5th, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Naturally adopted. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Shorsy. So first thing, really the only thing we have on superintendent's report tonight, we have our Second Century Project update with KSQ BBL and Mr. Clapper.
No Mr. Clapper.
No Mr. Clapper tonight. KSQ BBL. They're flying solo tonight.
How are you? I'm in the Bill Tom shoes. Carly's had some updates, some good stuff, some good photos on where we are with the project, turning over some areas right now. For the Capitol project, continuing to go behind the scenes with Seminoles, coordinating for upcoming summer work, Armon and the students, you know, with those elements, up on the Capitol, handling equipment. Does it give the folks a little bit of, is this live, some photos, some site photos, a little for the summer, we'll be here soon. Would that, I'd like to turn over to Carly, what's some updates, ones to go over yet?
Good evening, everybody. They have a lot going on this time at Keith's High School. Still continuing with patching and painting, like I said in class, that really will go through the end of each day, as you always see spots here and there that you gotta go back to touch-ups. Framing and sheet rock continues mostly on the ground floor, in the bathroom areas, in the art rooms, wrapping up those areas. The terrazzo repairs and replacements on the second floor, we finished those last week, they look so great. We've moved down to the first floor now, we're gonna be finishing that towards the end of next week. Continuing with mechanical electrical plumbing throughout the ground floor as well, we're starting to wrap up all of their putting up ductwork, putting up conduit for new electrical cables. We're gonna be starting to put in fixtures and whatnot next, on the bathroom fixtures next week as well, on the first and second floors, we'll start to see some more finish items. Epoxy flooring in the bathrooms started this week, on the second floor, the first floor, and in the nurses' area, they're probably all three of those areas that was, then they'll come in and put in the fixtures like I just said, and then the bathroom fixtures will follow as well, really tidying up those areas. Case work installation continues throughout the first and second floor, wrapping that up by the end of the month. We started solid doors and hardware throughout the second floor, moving down to the first. The wood doors are such a great match to the existing wood finishes, let's put our mall. And then metal panels up on the roof, on the mezzanine above the auditorium, the new silver alucabomb panels, like you see over on, over on the wings to tie the whole building together. And just to give you a visual of all the areas that we're working in, we've been working in the west corridor of the ground floor, getting ready to turn over the nurses' area and these new art rooms for April break. We've also been working throughout the rest of the ground floor, basically in all areas except for the music wing. These areas will be turned over towards the summer of 2020. Moving up to the first floor, we already completed the auditorium back in January, just to show you some areas where we have work going on and completed. On the first floor, this is the east side of the building that we've been working on, the two new bathrooms that I've been talking about are in this area. We have classroom renovations throughout the whole floor, as well as the floor area that was discussed, goes through the main corridor of the building. Again, the pink areas for April break turnover. And same on the second one, the same general locations. New bathrooms in roughly the same spots, putting in faculty and student bathrooms from our location, terrazzo throughout, and then classrooms take up the majority of that side of the building. These are the metal panels up on the roof, once they take the stickers off, they'll be that silver color, silly to up there to protect them, so we don't get any scratches before we give them over to you guys. The bathroom tile on the first floor. Then they started to put down the new epoxy flooring, it will have that nice shiny finish to it once it's done at the end of this week. On the terrazzo, these darker areas are the areas that were replaced, instead of just filling in the cracks that were there, we took out a section and made it more of like a strike pattern along the hallway. And once it's shined and buffed and everything goes together, it looks really great.
So the balance of the floor, they haven't gone through the whole corridor, have been shining too long?
And then on the first floor, they started taking out areas, it's pretty nice right now, but it'll look good once it's all done. Throughout the building, we have ceiling grid going up as well, we're putting in, maybe mechanical and electrical equipment within the ceiling grid, like new heating units that sit under the ceiling, starting to put those in, doing some of the groundwork that they've already put in place. All the blue wire goes throughout the whole building and into your IT system, so they've started pulling it through the ceiling and connecting it into the data racks on the first floor.
What we're also doing, I forget who the consensus is, coordinating with Gary on this installation of the wireless access points in the building, but the wraps will be completed, so we're getting this, the hardware, a lot of IT things, so just trying to prepare ahead for his upcoming activities he has to do.
The new wood doors, they're gonna be going and putting in hardware later this week, and then they have to go back and put the glass in these slots. I don't know if you can tell much from the pictures, but they are a really great match to the existing wood. They still have to go out and clean a little bit around the frames, don't mind if you put any mess around there, but that's got to be all good. Case work again going out throughout the building, in the classrooms, putting up the new teacher stations. In the nurses' suite, they just taped the entire area, they started putting, they're starting with priming and painting as well, and the epoxy is going in the bathrooms right now, and there's three bathrooms in that area. And then we have wall framing with roofing, using new wings, this is on an area in the ground floor, on the arc one of the new armors. See that with sheet rock? In the adapted PE room, this picture on the left-hand side, all the framing's in place, everything's painted on that wall as well, on that wall. Shortly they'll come in and put in, there's a new military lift that goes in there, rubber flooring, they're starting to put in some of the finish.
Is that where it was before?
What was that?
Was there adaptive PE there before?
No.
No.
That was the old.
Room six, it's downstairs.
Wood chopper. A wood chopper.
And that's on the first floor?
It's on the ground floor.
Ground basement, yeah.
So we have it, it's where the original cafeteria was.
And that's along the front of the building, is that right?
Yeah.
Wait, isn't that where the register is?
It's in the center.
It's this one right here.
Right.
So they have to go outside, or there is a wheelchair? There's.
There'll be a wheelchair lift.
Okay, but there's also an elevator?
Yes.
It has a few steps that go down, it's.
But the elevator brings you to the ground floor, and this room is a little more sunken ground floor, it's like four steps, so that's what the wheelchair is.
Oh, okay.
And then continuing with mechanical, actual plumbing, roughing, putting in new conduits that serve all of the rooms on the west-hand side of the ground floor. Tom isn't here, but we've been talking about the MPM windows and steering and whatnot. This is a quick picture of the window before that was restored, the paint was horrible, the glass was falling out, the window itself was falling out, so.
Somebody dropped it.
We just got the steering committee all decided and ship all requirements to do something with these windows. They came back from the restore, they cleaned up the wood, made it a nice square shape, replaced the glass, fixed some of the paint, they didn't do too much, so it's still kind of nostalgic, feel like it was built from the 1930s, but soon it'll be enclosed in the inlet case and put in the softens of it. Lot of those left, so. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Any unexpected problems?
On schedule for turnover?
So when is the turnover going to be? Of the.
Our first big turnover is April break, and then we'll take over COVID-listed, so if we move out of COVID, we'll go into the first and second floors, so half of the first and second floors are gonna be turned over, and the nurses' suite as well.
Okay, so if the board wanted to visit before the turnover, what would be a good time? Could you give us some date, a date for that, or?
Can't we do our June, our June meeting there? We could do either the May steering committee meeting or the June, June steering facilities?
So after the turnover would be a better time to visit.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because then we'll see it's done.
Okay.
You're not gonna start on some of the work until after school is out, so it wouldn't be until July.
So after your, after your April break, when you guys come back, they'll occupy the renovated areas?
Right.
So if you were thinking of seeing it beforehand, I'd say end of March, first week of April.
Yeah, well, I think that's what you were thinking, weren't you?
Yeah, see the, see the, before we turn over, that you were just finishing, so we can do that at the end of March?
Well, just for the, so we'll be talking about the first and second floors on the east side, and whatever, and the basement floor on the west side, is that, is that going to?
That's part of the turnover.
That's part of the turnover, so I'm just thinking, you know, to see that before all of the, all of the classrooms are occupied with, you know, populated with student material and teacher material.
If the board just lets us know what time, maybe we could, you know, through some emails or whatever, decide what a good date would be for everyone, we could set something up for the end of March, first week of April.
You'll have a sound hall there.
What's that?
You'll have a sound hall there.
Well, it's just one of, so I'm sorry, one of those three o'clock or 3:30 tours that we've had in the past.
Yes.
Sounds good.
Okay, great, thank you.
We'll facilitate that.
Okay.
Thank you for all your.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Not on the superintendent's report, but just to add one quick thing to let you know where we are, I know last time we met, we were looking at probably over a four, four and a half million dollar kind of gap, we've been working for the last couple of weeks on that, we're gonna continue to work on that, we're down to about 3.1 million dollar gap, after kind of our first couple of runs through, we're gonna do this again and again and again, and keep seeing where there might be some areas where we are, where we can find more efficiencies, you know, as always, our goal is to keep away from program, this may be one of the years where we're gonna have to have some serious discussions about some of the things that we do and prioritize some of the way we do things. We also are still waiting on our, a couple of health insurance rates, so that, that could make a difference as far as expenses are concerned, and of course, we're waiting on state aid. As I said before, I'm not, I'm always optimistic and hopeful that there'll be more aid for us, but the governor's budget was, you know.
Eight twenty-six, I think, right?
Yeah, but it was, that really was more than we've seen in the past out of that initial push, so I, you know, we're, we're not sure what we'll see on top of that, hopefully more, but I think we're really, we're really focused on our appropriations right now as well, to make sure that we are keeping our appropriations in a reasonable place and that we're using our money the way we need to use our money, and this is one of those opportunities we take every year to look and see what's working, what's not, where are some areas that we maybe could, could find better ways to do things for less, so we're doing that. By next time we speak, we'll probably be pretty close to done, but I will keep you all posted.
So while speaking budget, I was at, I went up to Albany last, the week before this past weekend for the lobby day, and there wasn't any indication from, from anyone at NISBA that the aid would be more than, that the legislature would put more than $175 million into the, into the addition of the governor's budget, so a billion dollars seemed to be high, so that's not as much as we've gotten in many years in the past. And there's also a lot of claims that the $6 billion budget gap really wasn't a budget gap or whatever, so there's just lots of, lots of back and forth and smoke and mirrors on that, but.
Okay, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Pedalino. Board of Education Policy Committee?
Policy Committee met, and I'm afraid that I cannot find my notes. I went back and, when I find them, I'll give you more specific details, but we did go over the school safety, no, we didn't, we went over the code of conduct regarding dress code, where we've asked, I spoke to Deidre Branford, who runs the Jefferson Committee at the high school, and the committee decided that we should ask students for their input in terms of making it a little more gender neutral and a little more updated, because the old policy really isn't. So they serendipitously had brought it up at a school, excuse me, I'm aphasia tonight, the, the school government.
Student government.
Decided that that was an issue they were interested in, so Ms. Branford was going to go to that committee meeting anyway, and then bring it back to whatever they were talking about, back to the Jefferson Committee, and they'll have a discussion there. So I'm happy that they'll have some input into the policy, and I told her we were still, as Mr. Spicer suggested, we want to create students that are ready for the workplace and ready for success, so we're, we're not looking for beach wear necessarily, but we want their input in terms of making it a better policy. We also talked about pursuing some idea of an animal policy, we don't have one for you yet, but we're looking into what's available, and we'll go from there in terms of coming up with policy around therapy animals, pets, that kind of thing, to make sure that the students are all safe and that, that it's still used appropriately. So we'll be coming to with that.
And we also had a discussion about the facility naming, do you want to discuss that now, or?
Oh, yes, we could. We had had a request to name a tennis court for a very well thought of individual in the community, and we, after talking about it, Dr. Pedalino reminded us that we have a Hall of Fame for athletic recognition, and we thought that anything that has to do with that kind of recognition would be better served in that Hall of Fame, and so that we're going to suggest that the family, the person, I think it was Mr. Wood, who brought it to the board, consider making a nomination, so that, I think that would be a wonderful thing and more, be more standardized. And that is another thing that we're going to continue to look at, how people can be remembered, and how we're going to archive whatever memorials we have and take care of them, but also come up with a way that is not preferential to any one person. So we have to continue that discussion, but we would encourage the public to make nominations to the Hall of Fame, because we want to remember people who've contributed to the community. Thank you for your time.
Yes, I thought that Dr. Pedalino made a very good suggestion that when it comes to remembering people for their individual accomplishments, such as athletic accomplishments, then the Hall of Fame is the appropriate way to do that, and in terms of naming a building or naming a facility or naming a part of a facility after someone, it would be done for someone who had provided long-term service to the community or to the school district and/or the community, that that would be more appropriate than, than naming a facility after an athletic achievement.
But we'll come back with standards when we.
Okay. So while we're at Board of Education, the, the Board of Regents has changed the date of the graduation review requirements from March 11th to March 4th, and we have a board meeting scheduled for March 4th.
I'd like to make a motion that we change our board meeting to Tuesday the 3rd instead of March 4th, so that we are able to attend that meeting.
Second. The session?
I think it's a good idea.
We had changed the April 1st meeting to Thurs, to this Thursday, and Mr. Lamb has conflicts on Thursdays, so I think it's fair that we, that in this conflict, we move it to Tuesday if it's okay with everybody, so if there's any, no other discussion, call the question, all in favor of making that change of date, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, so the April, the March, the March, actually, so the next meeting will be on Tuesday, March?
Third.
Third. Okay. Robin?
I just have a quick question, since we were talking about scheduling, did we, have we scheduled our second retreat yet, or?
No, so now we have, March 11th is open, so we can do a book study, so we still have, we don't have a date for the book study of Teaching in the Hood, or White People Teaching in the Hood, whatever that book name, I just finished it last night, I should remember the name of it, but, so we could do that on March 11th. We also have a book study scheduled on April 15th. So, what is your pleasure?
I think April 15th.
I would like to suggest that we just do one book study, because we've had so many additional meetings, and I think it would be better to just do the April date. So I'm going to suggest that we do the April date.
Second. Any other discussion?
So we'll, you have to invite the facilitators back. Second again?
The facilitators, invite the facilitators back for April.
Work on that.
April 15th.
Okay, work on that.
Okay.
Did they recommend that book, too?
Yes, they did, and that was, we passed that out.
Right.
A month ago or four. And so the March 11th date is now.
April.
Is now open, right, we're scratching that from March 11th from the annotated calendar.
Well, good, because you're steering that facility.
Okay. Yeah, so. So the next non-board meeting date that we have on a Wednesday is going to be April 15th. Okay. I don't think we need a, I don't think we need our motion to change that, to drop that date, to drop that March, that March 11th event. Yeah, okay, so we'll remove that from the calendar. And is there any other Board of Education business?
I just have a question about the meeting on the 4th to discuss new graduation requirements. We briefly talked, I know they sent out the five questions.
Yeah.
But we briefly talked about maybe having a meeting to see where the board was, and I don't know how many of us are going to that, probably several, correct?
I think so. So.
Yeah, but there was a date change, so I'm not sure that everybody can still go, so I don't know.
So the, so the date now is, is March 4th at BOSI's, from 5:00 to 7:00, or 5:00 to 7:30 or something like that.
Do we want to try and split up the questions and answer them at any time? I don't know.
We don't, so we don't, well, we'll have a board meeting on?
The day before.
March 3rd, so we can have a discussion then about what we would like to bring up at that meeting for whoever is going.
Okay.
Okay.
Can Camille send out a note asking who's gonna be able to go again?
Yeah, I'll send it.
Right.
And we'll be talking about it, actually, at our TNL meeting next week, so we'll do some discussion among board members who are there and.
Right, okay. And I have a. So Dr. Corey distributed a, an article from Education Week to the BOSI's board members last Friday, and I think it was very good, I'll distribute that to, to board members, and there are things in there that might, about education, it was a survey of, I think about a dozen companies, about what they would like to see, if they had, if they could design a course for seniors or for high school students, what would that course be, and there was a lot of information in there that might lend to graduation requirements or change in graduation requirements. Consent agenda is the next item on the agenda. Are there any items, any resolutions that anyone would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none, can I have a motion for the consent agenda, please?
Two more.
Second.
Second. Any questions about any resolution? All in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved?
If I could just make one comment?
Sure.
As you all know, we have a, Ms. Smith is on maternity leave for a little while from Miller, as Assistant Principal Miller, so we are lucky enough to have someone who is working toward their certification, who's gonna jump in to her spot and take over, so Ms. Barnhart is here, back in the red, so, and you can stand up. So Ms. Barnhart will be going from Bailey over to Miller for a little while to fill in, help Mr. Sheber and, and Mr. Reed over there, so thank you, and welcome to the other side.
Congratulations. Person in red ones.
I just didn't say red.
Okay. So we did, we did approve of consent agenda, right?
Donations.
Donations.
Donations. We have one donation from the Community Foundation of the Hudson Valley for $1,284.50 for the George Washington Elementary School, and we thank them for that donation.
Thank you. Old business. Old business? Dr. Chikovitz?
We had talked at one point about some kind of recognition for the people who on a regular basis contribute to night school, to day school, and I just wanted to put that back in place. There are a few people who do it regularly, like once a week throughout the year, and I think it would be nice to acknowledge those people.
Okay.
So we had talked about some way of acknowledging.
I will have Ms. Bonville and Mr. Teseko get us that information, and then we can thank all of them.
Okay. And we do that by resolution?
We can, sure.
Any other old business? New business?
I guess I'm just wondering about coffee conversation. We haven't had it in...
We haven't had any scheduled since the boys' club, since the boys' and girls' club.
Had no interest.
Did you ever hear from Citizens Action? They never called?
No, I gave them the dates and they never called, they never responded.
Things must be good in Denmark.
I would like to meet with the, the high school kids, students, like we did last year.
Right, and we will probably do that in May.
I think that if we get, you know, it's like late in April or early in May before they get too involved in other stuff, maybe it would be a good way to, to do that. So once we get mid to end of May, they're, they don't want to talk to the board, they want to take care of what they need to take care of, so maybe if we get them in April.
I think we got some more in terms of conversation from them when they weren't eating, you know, not at the dinner.
Right, no.
I think it was good to have...
We get them at the library.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we did it that, yeah.
The student government.
That was the one we had in the library last year.
But I was thinking, I mean, we could, we could consider expanding that group beyond the student government if the board wanted to. We have a lot of different groups that are doing things. We've just recently formed, we have a, a community, our community-based organization partners, we have a group and they have ambassadors from each one of each students who are part of each one of those extra, those other extra programs, Brothers at Bard and Wild Earth, those Cornell, so they all have a kind of a represent, representative from there, so maybe we combine those things, so we get a kind of a broader, you know, you know, swath of our students.
That's a nice one idea.
I think that would be good. I think it would be good to have more conversance than people to have a conversation with than board members at a coffee and conversation, so I would, I would, I would be happy to see a large, a larger group of students.
Dr. Penny, what was the Latino church we went to that one time?
Ah, Vitorial.
Vitorial.
But they, they were supposed to be in February, they canceled now.
Was it weather or...
No, no.
Okay. Because that was very well intended last year.
Our conversation with them was really, really played into everything we wanted to do in the pre-K program too.
Well, I could reach out to them again, I don't know.
Well, they, they opened up another church at Poughkeepsie, and so the pastors for the...
Busy, yeah.
Okay.
I think as long as we have offered it to the community, I don't think it's necessary to insist upon it.
And we haven't had any invitation from the Mount this year?
I think they offered, but I believe they've been as well.
Yeah, happy, yeah. To have us anytime.
Well, we should, I mean, we should follow up on that. That was on the, it's always nice to go up there. I mean, I think we should.
Good. Is that old business or new business? Next, old, so no for any other old business? Board member announcements? We won't miss the debate tonight, for sure. So board member, public participation, I don't believe there's anybody in the audience left for public participation. Executive session. I would like to propose a very brief executive session, very brief, for matters relating to the employment history of a particular individual.
A brief protocol for one, for one second, I don't know if you could do it, can go back to announcements?
Okay, yes, well, okay, yeah.
Well, I, I just wanted to say at the, at the Chamber of Commerce breakfast this morning, almost every one of the politicians who got up to speak spoke about problems they were doing at the Kingston, Kingston City School District. It was, it was a great honor to sit at the table and hear all the wonderful things they were saying about our school district, all the partnerships they had with our school district, how open we are and willing to work with the community, and all of the future endeavors that they want to do. It always seems to incorporate our school district. It was, it was lovely to hear.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so, so I'll make the motion again for an executive session for the employment history of a particular individual.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we'll have a recess of a few minutes and...